Time set aside for the regular meeting on the council. Right here, sir, here, come here, 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 here. Here, both here. Enter can a motion to approve the previous common council minutes. Someone will say it. Or second to prove the previous common council that's all in favor. Enter can a motion to the treasurer's report. So move second, or second to approve the treasurer's report, all in favor. Next slide about the agenda of citizens forum. Mr. Kepner.
Yes. You're ready. Where is yours? All right, thank you. I'm Terry Kepner, Bobby Scurven, together, both of us would like to thank you for allowing us to bring this to your attention. I've got several different items here. I'm gonna go through them fast. I sent out, I gave you a few. Documents there. Sorry, didn't have enough for everyone, but the very first item is what according to the CUSIS, I see called causes. Public nuisance affecting health and questions. Now, if I could just read the article and I'll give you a reason why I wrote this. This letter is to wake to. This letter is to make you aware of some very dangerous conditions that should be addressed immediately. The first issue is the home in a barn on the west end of Pecan Road owned by the city. The barn has fallen in and has been that way for over a year now. I see a pulse signal trespassing signs on a property. We have many children in the area and use this road all the time. You need, all you need is for one of them to walk over to barn and have the wall fall in. I know you're not, you're working at the home removal, but in the meantime, the city needs to fence this off before someone is hurt. Children don't understand signs. This is the property. If this property was owned by a taxpayer, I'm sure the taxpayer would be given 10 days to make this a safe situation. The second issue is the road on Pecan and the crook, the creek that crosses it. The bridge was replaced, I think, about a year ago. At the time he had guardrails placed over the creek. Today, there's no guardrails there. Just a few days ago, I was driving down the road or three kids playing on the road and one of the children got excited. Went off the edge and tipped over on her bike and stopped a foot from going in the water. Kind of disturbed me and woke me up. I says, darn, I'm coming here. I've gotta bring this your attention. I was on Jackson County dive rescue team for 12 years. It's not a nice sight to fall someone out of the water. So I'm just asking you to be a little proactive. That water, I checked, it's over four feet deep. A car could go over there and easily submerged too. So just bring this up to your attention and I'll let you take it from there. I says, if something happened there, it would be. You know, I think the city would be legally have a hard time defending this. But more important to me is maybe saving a life. Okay, so that takes care of this issue. What you do with it, it's up to you. It's important to me, especially that creek. I seen too many accidents in 12 years. Do you have any questions? Be free to answer them now or at the end. I am lumbered to and I've went around with this. I've talked to many, many people. And it comes to, I guess, you can call me a whistleblower. Okay, it's with your electrical inspector or your building inspector. Two years ago, I took all a building permit on my agricultural building. I cut the chase. I paid for footings, rough construction, rough electric service, permanent electric and final inspection. This was my permit here. I received none of those. Of course, it puts me in a position where I have to prove that the inspector was not there. Okay. I also received from Rick Smith last Friday, which was a big help, was a document from the electrical inspector. On his inspections on that property. There were only two inspections supposedly made on that property. He picked two bad days to pick those inspections. Turn back one page here. On October 11th, 2019. He indicates on his form here that he inspected my footings and they were four foot deep. These inspect, these footings were put in 16 days before he made this inspection. Supposed inspection. You cannot give a depth on a footing 16 days later after it's covered up. Furthermore. The day he made this inspection was a Friday. It was two days before I had a concrete pour inside that building. Two days prior to that, the reason I got the pour was because I had the roof on and I was able to get a contractor coming on bad weather to pour. Now, he indicates this was a footing inspection. Here, the roof is up and most of the steel was up. I have several hundred feet of conduit laying on the ground. The ground was all compacted, formed out, ready for a pour on Monday. The further this, I've got pictures of that building on that day. I got pictures of the conduit in the ground. Also have a receipt from the concrete company stating that the concrete was poured that Monday and Tuesday that week, two days after. He made this inspection. My question is, if he made a footing inspection, why wasn't my rough inspection right there? It had tripped over the conduits. Why wasn't the rough construction inspected? Because the steel was already up, I was way past rough construction. And, you know. That's pretty much just my argument for that day. I have pictures and I have receipts. So and for this footings, I also have receipts of the day I I rented the auger to put holes in. So I can verify the day I put the holes in. I had the auger rented and I had a tele lift rented to set this stuff. Okay. I'm just trying to justify that these, this document is totally false to you. Okay, I'm. October 29th. He made a rough inspection and he noted three things on this rough inspection. One is that he saw the criss. Two, he says, all the nail holes were filled in the hangers. Well, let me tell you, if you're a uniform dwelling inspector, that's one thing you're gonna look for is the hurricane clips and the fine nails in each clip. This building has got no clips in it at all. No steel braces at all that a man can verify the five holes or what he stated here. All the holes filled in the hangers. There's not a single hole or a single hanger in that building. The last one I got, I can laugh at is because he says, trust bracing installed. October 29th, that building was finished. Completed, not for rough inspection, finish inspection, it was finished. And I can verify that by pictures and. The first week in November, we head south. This is why I pushed so hard to get this building up. We pushed very hard. We had October 28th, October 29th, this building was finished. I had, you can't believe, I got pictures, you won't believe it. I got from four, the seal and filled with stuff in that building. That was October 29th. Okay, that's not rough construction, that's not finished. That's tall, finished building, all the doors, everything on seal up and two days later, we're heading south to Florida for winter. Okay. This is all I really have to say about his document that that was submitted to Rick. I didn't see this until Rick gave it to me Friday. Now, what is supposed to be done and if you, and if it's not being done on all your sites. This is a state requirement. And on this form, it has a section for rough inspections, finish inspections. And inspector is by law has to sign this. You'll notice mine is completely blank. All right, I would suggest that maybe any permits that are out there in town, you go and check. I gave you on the second sheet, the code article on the state says shall have this in place. There's no ifs, ands and buts when it comes to code, it shall be in place. Now, Rick made an argument that he puts red and blue, the green stickers on. That is okay, but that isn't supplement of this. When a contractor comes to a job, looks at this, sees the building inspector, is signed this, and if it's some rejection, then that building inspector will take a red sticker and put on the spot that's bad. Because the home you can have 10, 15 headers. What header is bad? What two by fours bad? So he puts that red sticker on there. The next time he comes back. He notes that, okay, it's okay, and he puts a green sticker on that spot. That's the way, the green and red sticker is not by law, it has to do. Yes, he does, by law, by state statutes. And I just wanna make that clear. He's not doing it any inspector you have. This is my, this is for my benefit because now it's, it's told me, well, you, you never called inspector, you never did this, you never did that. Okay. Inspector, if, if he takes a job like this. He should, if he does see no action on it, he should take a ride by and see if that building is, is going up. And if I didn't call, hey, that job is red tape, their building shut down. That's the, the stigma about not calling in. I've been in the construction trade for better than 40 years. I've dealt with inspectors for over 40 years. I taught continuing education for these courses. I will state, commercial inspector, electrical inspector, I know what I'm talking about. These are state mandates and it's very important that inspectors follow these guidelines. Without a signature here. No, he can say I didn't call. Well, I was, it was suggested to me that I get, get the phone calls that I made in those two months. Try and do it two years ago. Why did? I spent an hour on a phone with T-Mobile tonight and they said within 72 hours, he'll send me those documentation. If you need them, where my phone calls will verify that I at least called this inspector. Okay, they, T-Mobile just goes back to the last month if I wanna check phone calls and stuff. They don't go back two years. I got to a special committee and they says, we'll get to you within 72 hours. So I'm just trying to. Take the element, the doubt away, this man was not on my site. I told, you know, people in the city here. After that building was built, hey, I had no inspections. I called, I called, I called way before I started the second building addition. So I, I just, I would have never said anything about this had. The billing fees, but one from 200 on a storage building up to $900. People, that's ridiculous. I can inspect a building, a storage building in 15 minutes max. Nothing is covered, nothing, it's all exposed. You can see all the rafters, you can see everything. You're, you know, when you go at 17 cents a foot, which is in competition with Rome, by the way. I stay out of Rome for years because of their billing fees and everything else. You're right in competition with them if you allow. And I'll bet you any money that I was a building inspector that suggested going to footage on these buildings. Simple, simple, if you show up. All right. So it's, it's 320.10 for inspections stating about this code here. That sign, you know, that sign wasn't put in by the CUSA. That sign is state mandated by the state. That's why it's used. Now, I've had. That's enough on the inspector. By the way, I have filed charges with the state with him. I've taught, I'm a strong backer of inspections and having competent people out there, strong backer of it. And so when you get a bad egg, and I'm sure none of you had a ghost of an idea on this. But, you know, I've got a list of, of people that made, are building here in the city. And if I find time, I'm gonna go and, and ask them. Cause I've had people telling me, well, yeah, he made inspection, you roll by in his truck. Come on, is that inspection? I, you know, if you're really diligent about a good inspection and I, I paid for an inspection, I expect an inspection. Okay. When it comes to $900, it just lit me up because I paid $200 and didn't get nothing for. All right, so that's kind of where I'm coming from. Furthermore. Now, we can get. Look it up, pages I went through, just covering that here. I've had issues with Rick for several years of cold requirements and this and that. And I pretending two years ago that my building is an agricultural building. We had troubles and I, the first building I got, I got a variance for because my house is on one lot and my building I wanted was on another lot. And it was stated that. And it's not stated, you read in between the lines, but it says that you must have a primary presence, a structure there. My house is 100 feet from the pole building. But because of this imaginary line, it's imaginary 90 because it's been changed. But because of that line, I had to get a variance to put this building up. Now, I fought two years ago, I said, oh, this is an agricultural building and what to do? My house is 100 feet away from it. Does the public care if, if there's this line going between the two buildings? It's clear that, that building is gonna be my, under my care. We'll go one step further. A few weeks ago, I was told and I pull up the zoning permit and let me get this clear. My lot two is. 11 years ago, the two, we have five lots here combined and made into two. One lot was supposed to be residential, the other lot was supposed to be agricultural. Well, the two lots along the road were residential, but when we had this combined, it's supposed to be all turned over to agricultural, that second lot. Eric's argument was that if you looked at the zoning permit. The front half of this one lot is residential. Let me ask you, where in this town do you have one lot with two different zoning requirements? You don't. The whole lot is either residential or it's agricultural. I put this to Rick. I says, that was never changed when we had this deed. Changed 11, in 2011. And the city never erased that line because on this actual print, that line what was residential was eradicated, it was taken off. All the dimensions, everything on those lines were taken off and removed because that lot was put into one. The city never changed that. And so it says, well, it's, it's residential. I says, Rick, I says, it's not residential, it's a clerical error, someone had erased. That residential property. I, I asked him, I further asked him, I said, okay, I wanna build a home or a building right on that residential line. Give me the coordinates for. Give me the coordinates for that back line. There are no coordinates anymore. This is the legal document, recorded document, as you look at it, you're close, there's no coordinates for what you have is residential and agricultural on your zoning permit. Okay, I had to go several weeks ago and have my property resurveyed. And through the agreement we had with the variance committee and Rick is that we elected to put all our property, combine it all and put it all agricultural. I've had the survey, I'm waiting for a prince, the updated prince to submit to. To you, to get the approval, to switch it over to agricultural. Okay, it was, the main thing is, it's, it's gonna make it a lot easier and clearer for you. If one property is, is two properties with one house that's on one property and a building on the other property, it's gonna take all that out. You know, if I wanna put something, I don't have to get very, it's just, so. That's, that's what's in the cookings. The next time you see me, or maybe I can just submit the, this thing from Badger Survey. And all the people on a variance committee and Rick is totally up to speed. Actually, it was Rick's idea that we combined it and cleaned up the whole picture up. So, you know, but it's up to you to make the final decision. The very last thing I wanna submit is that. We, we have. A problem with what I call an agricultural building. If it's an agricultural building, an agricultural property has. The state says there's no inspections on agricultural buildings. Okay.
Terry, before you go much further, actually really appreciate you bringing all this forward, you know, not just building inspections of the situation with the bridge. Talked with Rick this morning a little bit about you coming here and stuff. And what, what I'd like to suggest, even though, you know, we went through quite a bit of what you have already, is to bring this to the committee meeting, which would be the first Tuesday of next month. Rick said he would inform me of the, of the time. And we're hoping to have someone from the builder, building inspector, some representation there. So we can ask some questions of them and try to clear up, like for instance, the reporting as far as, you know, getting your different inspections done, not just you, but in general. To make sure that, you know, something like you went through doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it, you know, help you people out.
Absolutely.
Where I was going with the agricultural building is. You have to be certified in the state to inspect agricultural buildings. Because it's an agricultural building, it's engineered print. And I have to follow the prints, I have to follow the engineer prints. Now, a uniform dwelling inspector is not qualified to do agricultural inspections. Okay, that's, that's the, the big problem. And that's why he's getting haul in the state is because he is inspecting properties that he's not certified for. And the good thing is, is his hangers, that's uniform dwelling. That's homes are stick built and garages are stick built. This is agricultural, what my responsibility is on it, is to build according to the engineer prints. Okay, and that's, that's as far as it goes in the state. I talked to the chief building inspector in the state of Wisconsin and I specifically asked him about egg buildings and there's inspections on. And his answer was no. Okay, this is probably a little known fact. I deal with codes a lot and I deal with, I used to deal with inspectors and the state inspectors a lot. I have my own contracting business and. I even taught continuing education, so I, I know the rules and, and I'm not coming to you with false rules or he said, she said, I'm trying to bring you facts. And let you make decisions accordingly. My question, my comment is, the building was inspected two years ago. You know, and the state says that it's not required. Want to just let it go? How many agricultural properties with egg type buildings would you ever have in the city? I'm probably one of the few. Okay, if Rick says, well, we don't do it that way in the CUSA. I said, Rick, it's a state code, state mandates. I'm sorry, you know, if you don't wanna do it that way, it's totally up to you. But I made you aware of the codes, the state codes, inspection policies. If someone takes the effort and checks inspections, what kind of inspections really been made here, I think it'd benefit everyone in this community. Cause people wanna get what they pay for. They might not like inspectors, but if you pay for it, damn, you better, you know, you better get what you pay for. And now with $900, first on this building, it's used to be 200. It's, it's a little bit off, right? That's all I have. Any other questions?
When I read your, when I read your numbers originally, I thought that said $17 a square foot.
No.
That ain't happening. And then I, then I put my glasses on. And that's still, that's still, we gotta, we gotta talk because that's quadrupling it for what? What happened?
For, for the sake of argument, this 17 cents a foot would almost get you a little bit reasonable inspecting a 4,000 square foot home. Because you have double air conditioners, double furnaces, you've got a big house. Because you have double air conditioners, double furnaces, you've got a big house.
Yeah.
And it would justify a higher dollar, but not on a, a storage building or a garage. Does anyone, can anyone justify nine hundred dollars for an inspection? Think about it, if you wanna build, you know, like, you're not gonna probably build one like I did, but, um, seventeen cents a foot for a storage building is way out, like, Rick checked other communities. You're basically on the high end of, of that seventeen cents a foot.
And we don't get it, we only get.
What you do is totally up to you, I don't think I'm gonna be back here with any more buildings or any more issues, I don't wanna be here. Uh, but.
Well, the buildings, yeah, not with us, but we appreciate you on the buildings.
You know, I.
Hopefully we can get this all sorted out.
We know, it's, it's, it's a matter, it's totally up to you, what you do with inspections and what you do with this, I'm just saying that, um. You know, here, here it is, here's my facts, the way I know it, and I appreciate you all listening. Uh, if you need any questions or have any questions, you want more documentation? I've got, I've got receipts of everything I said today, I've, I can back it up.
I'm sure.
So I didn't wanna tie you up with tons of paperwork and everything else. If you're really interested, you want something, I'd be happy to help you out. So, Bonnie and I, thank you all. We got a tough job and when it comes to stuff like this, uh, now, I'm sorry, I don't like being a whistleblower.
No, but we are gonna know if you don't come.
For two years, I, I bit my tongue off, I told people about it, I, you know, I never had an inspection. I never thought I'd be putting up an addition on the building and running what I ran into. So because of that, that's what just lit the fuse, I don't go for people lying. These inspectors lied over, I sent them an email saying, are you approved for agricultural inspections? Never received an answer from them, I expected no more than that. But, uh, he's got, um, I got files with the state with him. I don't know how far the state's gonna take this. Uh, if I can come up with three or four more residents where this guy is not inspecting and, uh, you know, all these co-violations plus, is this a re- repetitive things he's doing tonight? Rest assured, my God tells me, yes, it is, so it's totally up to yous.
I do wanna personally say thanks for bringing up the conditions down there on Peckham Road. Yeah, I've been over that bridge and it just, the light never went on from the old guardrails.
And I thought we had him put, I thought you put him on.
They were on the old.
Build.
They were on the old.
I could swear they were on the new.
It really scares me because we got more and more kids down in there. And, uh, you know.
As far as the building goes, I'll take and get a hold of Rick tomorrow morning and see if we can at least get some snow fencing yourself.
Put a snow fence around it or something. A little kid going chasing a bunny rabbit and where's the rabbit gonna run into something like that? Uh.
Right.
Let's just put us a cheap snow fence out there, a couple minutes worth and.
Exactly.
You know, so.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get a hold of him in the morning right away.
I mentioned it to Rick, I had more in depth and stuck to, uh, uh, conversation with Rick um, about those situations, but, uh, you know, I, I kinda hit me close.
The guard, the guard rail part, though, I'll tell you right now, that will take time to do. Because, well, that'll be going through the state and everything like that.
Well, uh, I didn't look this up, but, um, I would be willing to bet without bottom dollar that the state requires guardrails on that.
Yeah, it could probably be.
I, I have never.
Tony did that project.
I've never seen, I've never seen a trip yet without guardrails on it.
Yeah, it's about.
And I.
You know, you mentioned I've been over it too and I just.
You might not have been here though.
But it's, drive, drive down there once without the guardrails, um, even a car could easily.
Yeah.
Uh, go on there, there were, uh, they were there, but when one of the kids fell, it was just enough to say.
I'll definitely have him start checking.
Here I go, the board's gonna love me.
I'm assuming every, everybody in here would be okay with.
I'd be just.
I mean, I just. We'll just get.
All right, well.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Well, have a good day, city.
It's Colbert. All right, move on to committee reports. Thank you. First committee report is the whole.
We had one meeting, it was on June eighth, that was one that we had right after our last council meeting.
Motion to approve is presented, second.
Motion to second, approve the events of the committee of the whole report.
To the honorable mayor members of the Nacoues County Council. A committee of the whole meeting was held on Tuesday, June eighth, June eighth, twenty twenty one, seven forty five P M. Comes to chambers. Members present were Dan Carlson, Mayor Joe Rush, State Clerk, Brian Krubsack, Larry Krubsack, Adam Baron, Mike Combe, Dan Downey, Curtis Breda, Brad Hamilton, and Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were the Cusa School Board members, Corey Pravilsky, Darren Olson, Pat Reschinsky, Dave Schmidt, Mark Lockner, and Terry Whitmore Superintendent. Number one, discuss community survey summary that was drafted December twenty seventeen with the Cusa School Board members. And number two is to discuss developing a follow-up community survey summary with assistance of Wood County Plan and so on. If we don't have any questions or comments, there's no action taken. Anyone in this committee.
Thank you. Next committee report, uh, Ways and Means, Sheriff Dog. Uh, Ways and Means Committee Meeting was held Tuesday, July thirteenth. I have a motion to accept the minutes as written, second. By six, Mr. Trump. Are there two seconds? Two seconds. Almost for their, their first, so motion to second to accept the events of the Ways and Means Committee. All in favor.
Hi.
Members' President's Meeting were Dan Downing Chairman, Brian Krubsack Secretary, Adam Behring, Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Larry Krubsack, Mike Combe, Curtis Breda, and Police Chief Sean Woods. Um, item number one, we added the bills. Number two, recommended approval of beverage, beverage operators license for Jaclyn Borg, Kimberly Walrath, Natasha Nelson, Rachel Scar, Deborah Hutchinson, and Molly Martin for Foley's Need a Brew. Number three, approved, approval, recommend approval for beverage operators license for Nicole Kelly, Teresa Walter, Catherine Martin, and Gary Walter for the Edge. Number four, recommend approval of operators, beverage operators license for Charlie Collins, Terry Doherty, Mackenzie Carlson, and Kaylee Carlson for Goodfellas. Uh, number five, we had donation seminars, conferences, meetings. Um, recommend for approval, number one, two, three, and four. Motion to second to approve items one, two, three, and four of the Ways and Means Committee Report. Roll bubble, please.
Yes.
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 Don, yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Come.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes. Next committee report, Public Works.
Public Works has one meeting to report on, I moved to have a minute to accept it as printed.
Second. Motion to second to accept the events of the Public Works Committee Meeting, all in favor.
I. To the Honorable Mayor Members of the Cusa County Council. Public Works Committee Meeting was held on Tuesday, July sixth, twenty twenty one at five P M. in the Cusa Council Chambers. Member present were Larry Krubsack, Curtis Breda, Brad Hamilton, and Adam Behring. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, Brad Krubsack, Michael Combe, Rick Schmidt from the D P W, Chief Lee Sean Woods, and Terry Shemansky. Item one, recommend adopting Wood County twenty twenty one Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution. Item two, recommend approving construction of second driveway at three nineteen Wood Avenue with final approval from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Item three, discuss garbage refuse truck options. Item four, discuss Wood Avenue Water and Sewer Project Update. Item five, recommend sending to Department of Public Works employees to La Crosse for Wisconsin Rural Water Conference per handbook. And item six, recommend sending to Department of Public Works employees to La Crosse for wastewater operators conference per handbook. Any questions? If not, I recommend adopting item one, two, five, and six.
Second. Motion to second to adopt items one, two, five, and six of the Public Works Committee Report. Roll bubble, please.
Don.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Come.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes. I'm sorry. Next committee report for the Public Safety.
Public Safety is one meeting, it's reported, I'd like to make most of it accept the minutes as written.
Motion to second to accept the events of Public Safety Committee Meeting, all in favor.
I.
The Honorable Mayor Members in the Cusa County Council of Public Safety Committee Meeting was held Tuesday, July sixth, twenty twenty one at six fifteen P M. In the Cusa Council Chambers. Members present were Curtis Breda, Larry Krubsack, Brad Hamilton, and Mike Combe. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Dan Downing, Adam Behring, Brian Krubsack, Police Chief Sean Woods, Ambulance Chief Joe Crutchmire, Rick Schmidt of the D P W, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Renshams, Fire Chief Mike Cartier, Joe Kaiser, and also the attached list. Item one, we discussed July ambulance staffing move to the Nacoues Station. Item two, uh, recommend accepting the resignation for Tabitha Taub, Tom Buff, Connor Pilot, Matt Stafflet, and Cassandra Pyle Stafflet from the ambulance department. Item three, recommend appointing Ryan Hewer as the Assistant Ambulance Chief. Item four, discuss full-time ambulance service in the city of Nacoues. Item five, discuss ambulance maintenance and the need for a new ambulance. Item six, discuss the Town of Rome request for proposal. Item seven, discuss ambulance coverage agreement with the Wisconsin Air Force Fire Department. Eight, discuss the operational plan update, uh, before the ambulance. Nine, discuss the request by members of the ambulance service to have council members and the mayor present at the next meeting of July twelfth, twenty twenty one. And item ten, recommend Police Chief attend the Wisconsin Chiefs Association Summer Training Conference August first through the fourth in Green Bay with expenses paid per, per the employee handbook. I would like to make a motion to accept items two, three, and ten.
Second. Motion to second to adopt, but. Ten, the Public Safety Committee Report.
Come.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
Don.
Yes. Next committee report, Property Restoration. The Property Recreation Human Affairs has one meeting to present on, I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion to second to accept the property recreation human affairs meeting, all in favor.
Hi.
The Honorable Mayor Members of the Nacoues County Council of Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee Meeting was held Tuesday, July sixth, twenty twenty one at five thirty P M. In the Nacoues Council Chambers. Members present were Brian Krubsack, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, and Michael Combe. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Curtis Breda, Larry Krubsack, Adam Behring, Brad Hamilton, Rick Schmidt of the D P W, Police Chief Sean Woods, Dan Schmidt, Terry Shemansky, and Jim Pazinoff. Number one, we discuss building inspection services. Two, recommend starting a development agreement for the industrial park lot request by Jim Pazinoff. Three, recommend accept, recommend accepting the resignation of Dan Schmidt effective November first, twenty twenty one. Four, discuss three fifty Peckham Road property. Five, recommend an Arbor Day proclamation. And six, training equipment seminars. Like to move to adopt two, three, and five.
Second.
Motion to second to adopt items two, three, and five of the Property Recreation Human Affairs Committee Report. Roll bubble, please.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Come.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Don.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is old business, is there any old businesses coming along? So.
Can I get into this discussion that is here? The, uh, we were called out to there for zoning. And our interpretation of an agricultural building and what we found there was two different things. My question to you is what you're, what is your opinion that an agriculture building should look like?
That definition is gonna have to be figured out because it's, it could be anything from a garage for a.
Track tractor to
heavy equipment, heavy equipment, the cranberry equipment, you know, that's just a.
This was, this building was is finished off as this room is.
Well.
Yeah.
I guess that definition, that definition is probably gonna be in the state record somewhere. I'm sure that, you know, the definition of a agricultural.
Does anything come into play as far as whether the property is on, all that's designated?
Yeah. This is something that, that the, uh, the Plan Commission should really be looking at first because
it, it's there, it's somewhat circumstantial, I, I'm only a little bit familiar with the circumstances, but I do know that the zoning issue has something to do with it here or there, is a dispute over the zoning. The question whether something's an agricultural building is, I mean, there is a, there are statutory inter, uh, definitions, but there's also interpretation by local ordinance and zoning. So that's something that, I, I mean, we can't, I, I don't think legally that the common council can give an answer on a particular uh, building right now. You can say generally, you're looking around us, this doesn't look like an agricultural building because there's a certain sort of rocks, like a duck aspect to it. If I myself understood.
I have no idea where you'd find a definition.
But I, I don't think, I, I would recommend that we, that, I mean, it's rhetorical question to the council, but I think as it applies to the, uh, the Plan Commissioner, possibly for zoning court appeals, that it's a, uh, that, that, that it's gotta be specific to that building, the specific zoning there. So I think, personally, I, I think if, if you get to a point where the county council is making kind of what appears to be a ruling on it today without sort of the, the specifics of it, then you're kind of in a little bit dangerous territory. So I would recommend sending it to committee and, and having Rick lead, uh, uh, the, the review of it based on numerous factors, including the statutory and local ordinance definition. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes. So it's a running planning commission.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I would suggest, that it go to committee. And the Plan Commission's probably best suited for that.
All right. Anything else?
So.
So are they gonna know what an agricultural.
What's the difference between agricultural building and a commercial building?
They're gonna have, they're gonna have to look at.
He's got about a half a million dollar worth of cars. It's all cemented, it's all finished, it's all wired.
I think, I really think we ought to hold off on this discussion a little bit because we, we gotta send it to committee, we gotta get it in.
Yeah.
Thank you, you're, I know.
And it's frustrating for you too.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to, uh, new business, first item on there is the resolution for the Wood County All Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Did we do that during committee or no?
Yes. Yeah, we recommended.
Yeah, so do we have to do any more or no?
I think we just have to.
Would you recommend that they, or maybe adopt the resolution?
Oh, yeah, like, let's do it, make a motion to adopt your all hazard mitigation plan.
Second. Motion to second to adopt the, uh, Mitigation Plan Resolution. Brian.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Brendan.
Sure.
Aaron.
Yes.
Come.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Come.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
And the next item would be. Uh, the next item would be a energy motion for the resolution in regards to the American Rescue Local Recovery Funds.
So move.
Second. Motion second to adopt the resolution for the American Rescue Local Recovery Funds. Roll bubble, please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
There, Larry?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Next item, another resolution, this one authorizing execution of the D N R Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement. So move. Second. Motion a second to adopt that resolution. Roll bubble, please. I'm just.
Who?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Next on the agenda are the various monthly reports that are being motioned to approve.
Will you approve the reports as they are presented?
Second. Motion second to approve the monthly reports. All in favor?
Alright.
Next item on the agenda, approval of the clients. We had the three uh, pillars. And Ways and Means two fifty, Public Works two fifty. Airport Commission fifty five, Public Safety two fifty, Property Right two fifty. Um, Council meeting five twenty. And Mayor eight hundred.
Move to approve the bills as presented.
Second. Motion second to approve the bills. Roll bubble, please. Brian?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Are there any other issues that's provided by the law that needs to go forward?
Motion adjourn.
Second. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Alright.
Any adjourn?